This is a special council meeting called to allow Mayor Wilson to respond to budget concerns. And so, without any further delay, I want to turn it over to Mayor Wilson and let her...
Thank you, Councilman. I wanted to first thank Xavier Hartman for coming. Y'all can see Xavier, he is very familiar with the budget and how it works. His firm's been doing the finances and an audit for the city for over 40 years.[41.46][41.46](Laughter). And then, of course, Chuck is with us, President of the newly-appointed Finance Advisory Committee, and I've spoken with him too. What I'm putting together, and I did stay up all night doing this, so I hope that there's no misspellings and, you know, there may be errors, but I wanted to go over some of the highlights. I did take time to cut more money, but I have already cut, from what the department heads put in, $2.5 million from what they asked for. I cut $2.5 million, and then we've cut more, so I'm just going to go through this presentation. And I wanted to start with the full-time in-house attorney, because this is an important, I think, new position for the city, because we are at that point. We own all our utilities, we're the fastest-growing city in the state, and we need a full-time attorney, access all the time. This full-time attorney would take care of most of the planning, and there's obviously a lot of planning right now, because we're the fastest-growing city in the state of Alabama. And this person too, because they would be full-time, would not need as much help from our outside counsel. It is a duplicate cost. I look at all the bills, line by line, there's a lot of things we're paying duplicates. What I put together for this full-time in-house attorney is actually very, very conservative. And based on this, and I think the Westlaw or Nexus that you had mentioned, we'll get exact figures, but it's only going to be about $300 a month. And because we're moving from a part-time city attorney to a full-time city attorney, you know, right now, you're not going to get a secretary. If you have an office at City Hall, you're going to have the administrative help that already exists here. There's just no question that the city would save a ton of money. I'm estimating $90,000 a year. But the most important thing is that it's going to help with, you know, our liability. We're doing so many things, and we're growing, and we have to have that access. And it's only going to increase from here. That's just what, you know, we are going to have to talk about this serious thing, because it is best for the city. And I've discussed it with a lot of trusted counsel, you know, that I talked to, and they all agree. On the second slide... Jeff? Can you go to the second slide?
Yeah.
Okay. I just put in, you know, some of the cities that have full-time attorneys. A lot of municipalities, especially those who own all of their utilities, there's only, like, 30 in the state, have more than one attorney. But this is printed for council, so you can go through this in more detail later. The next section, next slide, is I want to go over cash reserves, because I know that one of the big concerns is the fact that, in the budget, we were using cash reserves. And I want to kind of do an overview of what the cash reserves are. We have, you know, all the cash on hand for the city, and then all the cash for utilities. I'm not going to look at utilities right now, but based on, from 2012 to 2017, the city has doubled the total cash funds. And we use cash reserves. When we have capital purchases, that's where they're paid. They're paid out of cash reserves. There's cash reserves, I mean, I don't know exactly how many accounts there are, but it's like 50 accounts, and they're all for something. Some of them are for debt reduction, some of them are for deposits for utilities, and there's a lot that we can't touch. But there's a lot there that are unrestricted, and they're pulled all the time for operating, not operating, it's capital purchases and improvements. And then you also have cash reserves for capital projects. So you're not going to ever eliminate using cash reserves, otherwise, you're just going to put it all in operating. And right now, you can see two in operating on the top. We've gone from, in 2012, a balance, these are all end-of-year figures for each year, $353,000, and we're sitting on today, $5.2 million. Because we've reduced our reliance on utility subsidy, the utilities have really increased a great deal. They've gone from, you can see in just 2016, what they've jumped to, well, you can look at the total amount on the bottom. In 2016, overall total cash reserves, both city and utility, was 28 million, like 28.5 million. And today, it's 36, almost $37 million. So we have an excess. Next slide. Just since fiscal 2017, we've increased cash reserves by $8,422,000. And it's because we have cut expenses so greatly. And yes, we're increasing our expenses for the city, but we're also taking care of, taking back all the operating expenses the city should have always paid for, like all the phones, our own utilities, you know, computer expenses, you know, community development. I mean, everything, $2.5 million of operating expenses for the city were being paid and basically hidden in utilities. I cannot stress how far we've come in one year. This cannot be discounted. The fact that we're using cash reserves, which we've always used in the past for things like this, we're not doing anything different. We're not robbing Peter to pay Paul, you know, and I'll get into this in more detail, but the, overall, we're in a very healthy position financially. We probably are sitting on too much cash when you have, like I said, great needs in infrastructure, and also with the capital projects that we need to do. Even when we take these cash reserves to pay for these purchases, it's not going to reduce cash reserves, because you can see what happened in one year, how much they went up. And again, that is because we concentrated on the low-hanging fruit in fiscal 2017. And you can see, we've been very, very successful in helping the city get in a lot better financial situation. So, the next slide. Okay, funding sources for the city, I mean, besides its, you know, sales tax and things like that, but the things that I have on the bottom of the budget book, the funding sources, and I put in a comparison for you. The utility subsidy from 2012, Jeff, can you, oh...
I didn't know you were here. Thank you very much. Awesome.
In 2012, the total utility subsidy was over $6 million. Just let that sink in. And by the way, we, that's a minimum, because to go back the months previous to when we put this budget together, it would take Jill a lot of time to put all those figures together. That's a conservative amount. Okay? 2013, the utility subsidy was over $5 million. Same in 2014. In 2015, it was less, $4.2 million. But in 2016, it was $5.7 million. In 2017, we no longer paid for operating expenses in the utilities that belong to the city. And as you can see, from 2016, and you can go all the way back to 2012, the reality is, today, our reliance on utilities in 2017 was actually less than $2.8 million, because we transferred over $1 million more than what we needed. We had an over-Million Dollar surplus, basically, in the city. We don't need a surplus. We just need to break even. We need to get the city so it is self-reliant, and the money that we pull from utilities can be used for things that we really want to do within the city. But right now, I just, again, cannot emphasize enough what has been accomplished in one year. And I did a little graph to, to just show, this is the, basically, the reduction in the city's reliance on the utilities. The other funding source that we have, of course, is our cash reserves. And in that big spreadsheet of all of our cash balances include our operating accounts. And additional accounts are just pooled money that can be used if the operating needs it. But we're sitting on over $5 million. The funding, we're not going to use cash reserves, when it said operating, we're not using cash reserves to pay for payroll. The cash reserves that we're using in this budget in 2018 are for capital purchases and improvements. You can see in 2013, we used four point, almost $4.2 million. In 2014, it was $2.7 million. In 2015, it was $3.7 million. And we didn't do much in 2016. I think it was the election, and there's just a lot of things going on. But in '17, we used zero. And it's not that we're going to say our goal is to always use zero. Do you want to borrow the money for capital purchases? I mean, this is, they're there to be used. The reason I have $1.7 million for 2018 is because there was a duplicate in Public Works, which I'll get to a little bit later, but I've reduced that figure down even more than that, but there was a $270,000 duplicate in Public Works. Here are the personnel stats again, because there has been, you know, a lot of concern about the personnel that we're adding. You know, it's not, yes, we are adding, but we're not adding what we probably should have for the city. If we continue policing the jurisdiction that we have, we need 33 more police officers. That's not in this budget. But that is the reality. It has to be addressed in 2018. The number of full-time employees, and that's what I'm doing, a lot of this is on full-time employees. We had 281 full-time employees in 2010. Today, we have 270 full-time employees, when we did this original budget, and we have hired some people, you know. That's almost 4% down in seven years. And our growth, our population has increased 27%. I mean, you got to start somewhere, you know? We're not putting in a 27% increase, but with more citizens, services, their demands for better services, we have to grow with our city. The other thing I wanted to mention, because this is two different stats that I didn't put in the original proposal, but the total expense for full-time employees in 2010, you can see, the snapshot in September when I did this, were lower. So, again, we have great needs. I think we started, but I've cut even more with the things that I feel by adding these people, you're reducing expenses in a lot of cases, with overtime and just inefficiencies. But in a lot of instances, we're going to pay for it, whether or not we have somebody working for the city or not, and a lot of times, we're going to pay a lot more for it. So... And the next slide. And the other thing I wanted to talk about in personnel, because I did give y'all the sheet that's kind of black and white, it's not on this. And I don't have a, all of the, let me see your stack real quick. I don't have a... Oh, no. Where are the...
Right next to it.
Y'all could be looking at this with me. I did not know they weren't named out. Okay. I'm going to give it to, yeah, but I'm going to take some of these too. What I did is, to try to keep things simple, the open positions that were left from 2017, again, this budget was presented in early September, many of those have been filled. So, they were approved in 2017, they weren't hired, because we passed the budget late, but we also, we needed a lot more help in HR, and these hires are coming in, we're hiring people, and it's going really well. But a lot of these positions, like I said, they've already been filled. Vacancies, understand, there are people who have left the company, their position is still needed, and we're just filling that vacancy. I think when you leave these off, oh, and seasonal positions, because we have a lot of seasonal employees, part-time, they work in the summer and they leave, they're in the budget as if they might be new, or we're adding something, but they were in last year's budget too. So, I'm putting aside these so we can concentrate just on new positions. And the first part of this is for just the city. And what I did is I separated it out into full-time positions, and I also did some cuts. You can see the ones that I have a line through it. And then I did the edits in that black column of what we're actually going to be paying. I also separated out part-time positions, because I think a lot of y'all are just counting the number of people that we're hiring. Part-time is, there's three, I guess, new positions. One's an intern, and the others are, you know, with part-time, there's no benefits either. So, when I count the full-time positions for just the city, new people coming into the city, it's 15. The Fairhope Docs, I'm kind of separating out too, but those are two part-time that are listed below. I mean, Fairhope Docs is a new department. It has to be considered on its own. If it's edited, it needs to be engaged with Lynn and Drew. And then the promotions, again, these are not adding people, but these are the net increases for the city promotions. So I think that kind of, for me, and I hope for you, puts things a little bit more in perspective, instead of looking at a whole page of things that look like there are a bunch of new employees, but you've seen some of them, because they were in 2017, and a lot of them are hired, and many of those were vacancies, and openings, and things like that. So, the total reduction, based on this, and it hurt to do, but is $274,413. And then I went further into utilities, and did this, the same thing I did with the city. And we have 12 new full-time employees proposed in this budget, because, again, I gave you the stats from 2010, utilities, we own all four, it's our biggest asset, and it's doing very well. It's projected to make the biggest profit in Fairhope history in 2018, and we have to have the people to run it. You've got the promotions on the bottom. The total reduction in the utility was $176,500. So the total reduction in personnel is $450,922. Now, I did put judicial by its side, because that's not, that's another arm of the government. And I do believe that the magistrate is paid out of their funds, that I can verify that. But again, that's not, I don't hire these people, and I don't interview, and, you know, so that's why I separated that out too. Okay, impact fees, we have $745,820 that we'll be using out of those funds for those four departments. This is funds that you can use by collecting the 1% impact fees for growth, and all of these, we've basically pre-qualified for all of these departments. $140,000 for police, fire, $226,000, economic and community development, $300,000, and public works, $78,500. We're not depleting those funds. I think we still have over a million in that, and now that the moratorium's up, impact fees is, they're going to start pooling up again. And if they're in the account, we should use them, because these are legitimate things that we have to spend in 2018. I'm not going in there and saying, oh, we have these funds, let's figure out how we can spend it. It's just, if they qualify, you might as well use them. This is just a kind of a, an overview of the cash reserves. Again, I personally think we need to just rename all of these funds and appropriate money for everything that we need and call it what we want, if you don't want to call it cash reserves, because the biggest thing, and I think misconception, is that we're taking this money out of the rainy day fund to pay payroll, and that's just not the case. These funds are set aside for certain uses, and we're using them for those uses. In the 2018 proposed budget, that's in your budget book, we had $2,030,000. Again, not unlike many other years in the past, but did I mention that we're paying over $2.5 million of our own operating expenses? I mean, all of those things have to be taken in perspective. I want to go ahead and mention that there was a duplicate of $270,000 in public works. This whole budget is done manually. It's painstaking, time-consuming, extremely detailed, you know, we put it together, every time we answer questions or make an edit here, hours and hours go into this. So, you know, just understand, I mean, there might be some honest mistakes, but anything that's in here, every purchase and every hire, you know, all that detail is done at that time. So if there is, and I wanted to mention this too, about personnel, a lot of the personnel, new personnel, I did not put these in, and Jill didn't either. All the department heads put their personnel needs in, but the starting salaries for most of these were at mid-range, and we don't, you know, we do hire people, you know, at the beginning. The directors is a different thing, you know what I mean? But most people are hired at the lower range. So that, so that is also reflected in these cuts, and that was just something, we wouldn't have spent it anyway, because, again, you take care of those things as you hire people. Then the other cuts that I made, and that's also in one of these sheets, for additional cuts for capital purchases and improvements. Okay, it's mine, it has a blank sheet on the front. That is the, you don't need that page. Actually, that's, that's utilities, which I'm going to put aside, because there's really not a problem with the utility budget. I can answer questions, but I'm mostly concentrating on the city right now. I have all this on my computer, so these are like huge printouts for... It's the capital purchase and capital improvements. It looks just like this one, but it's for the city. Here it is. It looks like this. Y'all want to look? Y'all have it? It's, it has all of the, this is in your book, in the back of your budget book, but I printed this one, because I just highlighted where we're cutting or reducing some of these things. So, the total reduction in those capital improvements, I mean, in capital purchases, is $375,150. So the total amount that should reflect on the front for cash reserve needs will be $1.3 million, I mean, $1,384,000, instead of $2,030,000, which is a reduction of $645,000. Other expenses cut. Again, the department heads presented all of their budget presentations, starting in June, with all their needs, knowing that they weren't going to get them, but we also wanted to plan for the future. If these are legitimate needs, and we can't do it this year, then we're going to start planning for 2019, 2020. Because if we don't start forecasting these things, and we just say, sorry, good luck next year, I mean, we're just, we're not doing strategic budgeting. And that's what this is now. But we've gone through these lists with department heads many, many times, and so I went ahead and... And so I went ahead and did some more cutting. Again, what was brought to council by the department heads individually since June, I cut all of that by $2,524,000. But in addition, I took, went through the whole budget and just where we had a big difference, for instance, in actual 2017, what was requested and then what was budgeted, I came down a little bit more on some of those. And that totals 92,475. I wanted to just give you a snapshot of just the city because in the original presentation that I gave you, I looked at debt for both utilities and the city. And right now, I think the biggest issue is just the city budget. And there is an ordinance on the books right now that we put away 25% of sales tax to go towards debt service or to pay off, you know, additional debt. The reality is, is not all debt is bad. And we have, in my opinion, been paying off more debt than we need to. It has to be a balance between paying off debt and taking care of city needs. And, you know, that's why we have so many needs today and why we're going to have to take care of them, a lot of them, all at once. And if we're not doing things like this, the cash will be available to do these things and we don't have to borrow money. But as you can see, in 2017, the debt was, I don't have the amount here, but it was, it's over $7 million. And by 2020, it will be paid down almost 80% because a big chunk of it is a short-term loan. There's no reason to pay that down early. And using sales tax to pay off debt on utilities, again, we have to separate these things out, not only with our expenses, but with our income. And sales tax is a city revenue. I honestly think that ordinance probably needs to be removed because hopefully the city's not going to be borrowing money. The infrastructure needs that we have today are all utility. Sales tax projection for 2018 is 8,353,000. 25% of that is over $2 million. So that gives you an idea of, you know, how we're going to pay for these things because that money does go into reserves. And this is just the closing comments. And then I'm going to answer questions and Jill's here too to help. But the, I can't emphasize it enough, we've reduced our reliance on utilities. It's something that we have to remember every time we look at this budget, okay? We have cash reserves to pay for all the capital purchases and we're not going to be reducing cash reserves. We've increased cash reserves since fiscal 2017 over $8 million. I've reduced the following expenses. New positions reduced and $450,000. Capital purchases, $645,000. And then other expenses for a total reduction of 1,188,547. Now, we didn't redo this whole budget book, you know, but these are kind of a snapshot of what we're doing. And know that the expenses, as you had mentioned, Jimmy, the expenses in utilities, we are adding the things that we need in these utilities because, like we had mentioned, the SCADA system, the mapping, GIS, all of these things, we have to have that in-house. I mean, we have to know this, all about our sewer lines. What are the ASAP things? I mean, the technology is there. Do we really want to outsource that and pay more money? I mean, this is something we have to bring in-house because, again, we're growing and we have a ton of infrastructure needs. So the expenses that have increased in utilities is because of that and because of some capital projects that, if you go to the capital projects page, you'll see all of the, it's not like we have these expenses every year, but we are taking care of some big items. This is not our infrastructure upgrades. These are capital projects. And I'm just trying to think, one last thing too, with utility expenses, you had mentioned, I think the difference is what, $300,000? You had looked at it? The difference between actual 2017 and 2018. Metering has gone to utilities and that was a huge expense. But we had revenue and metering all under one department. Well, metering is utilities. And the city was paying that, you know what I mean? And so now they have all of that. It's going to be under utilities. And that with the increase in the personnel needs, the capital projects that are all in there and capital purchases, I mean, that makes up some of these expenses too. So I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you for taking a look at this and making some cuts. One of the questions I have is, I know we've pulled, we've kind of cleaned up the budget in the sense that we've separated the city function, the utility function. There were different items that were embedded in utilities. And I think it's good to clean it up, but now utilities pays a percentage of the admin and operating expense for the city. It's just not embedded in separate line items. It's just a one-time kind of.
Well, what we're doing now is, you will see a transfer, a transparent transfer.
But that's not the same as the.
And I'm getting to that. I'm just getting to the two different ways that it's not co-mingled, but it is a transparent transaction. You have a transfer anytime we've determined that we need money from the city. It's not going to be, the city's going to pay this for us, you know, because that makes the city look healthier and the utilities is losing money. We have to do the counting right. But the other thing is, the city, the utilities would not exist. They would exist, but I'm just saying, they would have to, if we separated out and made them hire their own HR accounting and, you know, their own, every bit of the admin that we have for the city, the percentage that they're paying for is cheaper than going out and duplicating all of that administrative cost again. So that's how we feel is a fair way to handle that. But it is also transparent and in the budget that way.
Right. So what is the number, for example, if I'm looking at utilities, how can I determine what that number is? Yes, ma'am?
It's in the city. When you look at the front, is it the front page of the city?
Is that the election call?
Yes. Yes.
Be an expense under the utility, right?
Yeah, well, we can do that too, but I'm showing you where it's coming into the city first.
You wrote on page, it's under tab one of your budget book. It's at the second page, sort of the middle of the page. It's at account 41215 and 41260.
Gotcha.
See how it's been reduced significantly from 17 to 18?
Gotcha. It's the reimbursement for revenue department and, okay, no, it's the, yeah, it's just the line item right here.
Well, look at the, those are edits. That line, it's going to be in your actual.
Right here to the far right.
Yeah, yeah.
Right here. See, I guess what I'm, what I'm looking at when I see this is, I do appreciate and I agree with the way you've sort of separated it, but I think it's maybe a little bit inaccurate to say. So what we've done is we've cleaned up the way the utilities and the city have their accounting, but there's still a $2 million transfer to.
We've always paid that.
Okay, it's always been there.
It's always been there.
Okay.
That is not included in, when I'm looking at, when I'm telling you about the subsidy, that's something the city has always paid. I mean, the utilities has always paid.
Okay. I thought this was something there. So when I, I guess my other question on more of a high-level review, we save, we pulled some of those utility operating expenses out, but the actual expenses, City of Fairhope decreased.
This is for utilities?
Right, well, okay, so.
Which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the city first and then.
Okay.
Okay, so the expenses for the city decreased about, based on my calculation, about 600,000 from 16 to 17. But utilities increased about 1.7 million. The net effect was that our expenses combined were larger and about a million dollars larger in 17 than 16, and we're proposing about a $3.8 million increase in expenses from 17 to 18 combined.
Combined. And that's why I said, try to look at these separately, but I knew, I know that you want to do some top-level stuff, but these are, there's a lot of moving parts in this and there's so many different things that went into this that it's not going to be one thing. But to tell you on 2016, the difference between 2016 and 17 is, we didn't improve a budget until April. So not every single thing, we're going to be able to see a clearer picture when we have a full year of doing this.
I agree.
And the expenses, because I think you are talking about 2018 with utilities, right?
Correct.
Did you go through all those expenses?
I mean, I just, I went through and added up the total expenses.
I mean, I want you to look through the expenses so you can see all the things we're doing.
Yeah, I have read, I have read through that, but.
Okay.
For my calculation here, I added up just the, I mean, I just went straight to the summary.
This is not, a lot of these things, it's not like that's going to happen next year. That's why you really have to look at all the expenses.
And that's where, if we had a three-year history of accounting in this way, we wouldn't necessarily have to look at it, but that's why I'm looking at.
I can tell you right now, with a one-man show, you've gotten more information than any council person in the history of Fairhope. And I'm just trying to tell y'all, now, the 2018 budget is about as solid as it can get. And I did compare where these funds are coming from, what we've spent in the past, okay? Those are the things that, you know, you can definitely get in the weeds on a lot of these things, but those expenses, we're hiring in more people. You know, we literally have to go through every expense.
Right. And pulling the utilities out of it and just looking at the city, the expense is jumping 3.6 million from last year to this year.
Right.
Just for the city.
And that, again, you can see all the stuff that we're putting in there. We have a lot of capital purchases and a lot of things in there. We're also hiring full-time expertise in these departments. And we are, for a full year, taking over all of our operating expenses. Some we found later in the year, like the metering and the community development, because we thought we had pulled community development out initially, but it was not, it was still in there. So you've got that amount that we're taking care of, plus you're adding all of these other things that we've never had before. And again, just take out, I said it's $2.5 million that we're taking over in expenses. When you look in previous years, it's even more than that.
But at the end of the day.
So I'm just saying that, if you take that $2.5 million that we're taking back, then you're saying that we're increasing it $500,000 and look at all of the stuff that we're putting in there.
But if you combine the two, we're looking at about a $3.8 million increase. And that's why I look at Fairhope, and I'm just using an analogy for everyone to understand. I consider the City of Fairhope and the utilities, and I know it's not quite like this, it's almost like a husband and a wife and they each have their own separate checkbook. And at the end of the day, the bottom line is what's coming in from the two of them. Now, maybe one has agreed to pay for the housing expenses and someone else is saving for retirement.
That's not even happening on this. They're truly paying their own expenses. And it's a separate, you know, and I feel like, we're not going to not use utilities. It's an asset and we're going to use it. If you would rather say, I'm going to continue using more utility subsidy, that's your choice. I'm saying, we don't have to and we're not going to get hurt for it. You know what I mean? So we'd have to go line by line on these expenses because it's not one thing that's going to stand out and say, okay, that's going to answer your question.
Right. And you've made a cut of about 1.2 and I'm thinking, is that counting? Yeah, that's everything. And I'm thinking a little bit more. So I think you've made some good headway. And I'd like to take a look at where these numbers impacted and see if I can come up with some additional cuts and run those by you.
This is what I want, I told, and that's why I asked Xavier to be here, and of course, the finance committee is always invited, but I almost want other people to talk about where we are and then how much we've accomplished and how cutting things, you're not cutting an expense. And if you think, I'm going to cut another million and we're going to save a million, that's not the case. These, this is a strategic budget. We're investing in things that are going to save us money. You don't want to do this expense, well, I can show you where you're going to pay for it anyway. Because we can no longer just do nothing. In 2017, we concentrated on cutting expenses, but we didn't do anything.
But expenses actually went up.
That's because we took over our operating expenses.
But they went up combined. So we didn't really save any money.
For 2017?
Yes. They went up $1.1 million combined.
We got to talk about, I never want to address the budget as a combined thing.
But if you're saying you saved money by taking over.
Separately.
But if you're saying you saved money by taking over operations.
I didn't say we saved money. I'm saying, we have more expenses, more obligations. We're being more self-reliant and not taking money from utilities and if we need money, it'll be done in a transparent transfer. I'm not saying that we're accomplishing that, yay, we've got $2.5 million extra in our operating, I mean, expenses. I'm saying, it is, the city's to pay, we're paying it. And we're doing it without doing anything else that we haven't done in the past. If anything, we're using less cash reserves because we have a lot of capital purchases in here. And we're using less money from our utilities. I mean, gosh, can somebody?
How do you say, when you say less money from utilities?
Yeah.
How's that? When I look at utility transfer, in last year it was 2.885 and this year it's 2.815.
Okay. And this is, I'm glad you asked that because I want you to make sure that you understand where we are as far as the. Does that, does that say funding sources comparison, utility subsidy?
No, it says cash reserves.
I think it's, is it that one?
Yes.
And you have this printed too. The amount of money. And you have this printed, too. The amount of money the utilities gave the city to keep it going in 2012 was over $6 million. Do you understand that, that, these are all the years totals that the utilities subsidized the city. It subsidized the city in two different ways, by transferring money, just outright transferring to our operating, but it also had millions of dollars hidden in utilities for the operating expense. For example, and help me out on some of the bigger items, but for example, everybody's computer expense went to gas. I'm making this up, but just give them some examples of how, this has nothing to do with transferred money. These are operating expenses that the city should have been paying for.
Where, where's that little item in the budget? In the budget, on the chart?
Oh, it's at the bottom of the, it's at the bottom of the front page of your budget book, but I went back here and I made a copy for you, funding sources comparison for the utility subsidy, and I went back to 2012. It's, it's on the screen right now. If, the main, the main expense that was being paid out of the utilities is the utilities. The utilities for all the city buildings, citywide. So-
That was a big one.
It was huge. I mean, we're, we're talking about the electricity, we're talking about the gas, we're talking about the water and sewer. It was all residing in the electric fund. And for 17, it took a long, long time, but I went out and I separated out what rec department should be paying, what police department should be paying, what each individual department should pay. That was probably the biggest expense, right there. Computer was shifted out of the utilities for, you know, two or three years, in, all into the general fund. Telephone was being paid out of just water, because they got the revenue from the tower rentals. So that expense only lied in the, in the water fund. It was not separated out into the individual departments.
All right, well, that, that's kind of getting to my point with this budget, and Jimmy kind of mentioned it. And the mayor even called a, I can't remember what the amount was, it was capital improvement that was in another department. It's going through this budget, for me at least, has been extremely difficult, because the more you get into it, the more confusing it gets going back, trying to compare it to last year's budget because of the reclassification of numbers. So then, to, to me, you sit down, and what Jimmy's been talking about, these numbers, you know, the surplus deficit goes from 1.9 million to 5.5 million. And you get down with the, you know, with the transfers, the net profit-loss before utility transfers, 1.7 to 2.7 on the first sheet.
It's one of those things, and I, I'm not looking at it right now, but we try to give top-line numbers to try to make it simple, and then y'all feel like we're hiding something and you want more information. And so every time we deliver more information, you're right, it does get more confusing. But the little time that you've been spending on this, times that, times a thousand, because we're doing the work to put all this together. And I want to explain it to you, but this is the first meeting we've had to talk about the budget. We've met, you know, a time, but just answering a few questions about little nitpicking things is not going to move the city forward for an approval. You are taking just these arbitrary numbers and not looking at every single detail to see why we're doing certain, certain things. We have written tons of notes on each, you know, knowing that we might not talk or meet on this. I, I put a note on every single thing, and I don't even know that those notes were read, because you really have to look at the budget line by line. And yes, you have to look at a bird's eye view, too, but the bird's eye view is, what we have done is extraordinary. And if you don't want to hear it from me, I'm hoping that some professionals here can stand up and say that, you know, this is, we are headed in the right direction.
I, I'd like to ask a question, our treasurer, if he could stand up, please. One, just sort of a, a, please, yes, sir. Maybe just as, this might not be a simple question, but if you could give me a simple answer to the best of your ability, I'd appreciate it. Just, just for those watching at home, because there's been some discussion about cash reserves, and Jimmy and I talked to the mayor about it on Monday, and looking at these printouts, obviously, the City of Fairhope has numerous accounts. How do we determine, or how, how is it determined which of those accounts and the cash reserves in those accounts we're able to use for the budget versus which ones are restricted?
Because in the account title, it says reserve. Those were identified by account titles for a particular reason. If it's restricted, you know, we know what those things are. Gas tax is a restricted fund. So, and then all the bank accounts I've classified, well, they, they've been classified. I just used what was already there, but kind of put them together so I could make a handle out of them. And you have operating, operating accounts, you have restricted accounts, like gas tax is a good example. Impact Fund is a good example there. You have reserve accounts that have no restrictions on the use. So that's what the reserve accounts are. And we've entitled them reserve specifically for that purpose.
So the, when we're talking cash reserves for budgetary purposes, that they're coming from those reserve, those accounts that have been marked reserve?
Yep.
And are there any limits on how much of that money can be used for the budget?
There, in, in general, no. I think maybe the rainy day fund may have some, some limitations on that. But in general, I, I can't think of any, if it were any, like, legitimate restrictions, they, I would be considering them restricted funds and not reserve funds. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I don't want to put you on the spot, Xavier, but do you have any comments?
I'm trying to get up out of my chair.
[laughing]
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as y'all all know, because I've heard you say it, but this process actually started a little over a year ago. At the time that Mayor Wilson first came into office, she asked me to come in, and actually, first, a team from the audit team at HB&amp;K, which by the way, I'm not employed there anymore. I'm retired and I'm a consultant.
And you're volunteering.
And this gig is volunteer consultant, okay? So, so you're not paying me anything for this advice, so you can take it for what it's worth. But, but anyway, that, so the process, and, and I think the mayor was correct, there were some items that were detailed in other funds, and there was also some items embedded in, in the general fund accounts or the, you know, the various departments that, you know, should have been paid by utilities. I think she mentioned metering, and then Jill mentioned the significant amount of utilities that were all paid by the electric fund. So we had a, we had a kind of a picture that was kind of upside down because of that. Now, historically, it's been done like that for 40 years, probably. But, but that didn't make it easier to be able to determine, you know, what the, the city's egg is, you know, what the general operating fund and what is needed to fund the component, two component units that you have are. So consequently, it, it took a lot of work to recast that. And some of that gets reflected by comparison now. So the comparison isn't going to be pure. What, what, what will be a pure comparison, though, is that when you adopt the budget, and of course, last year, I think it got adopted in April, you know, we're more than halfway through the year. Now, we're close to the end of the first quarter, and you don't have a budget. But when you adopt the budget, and it's spread among the financial statements, then the comparisons on a month-to-month basis become very clear. Because now you can go back and look at the, the budgeted amount, and look at the actual, and that, that will kind of ferret out some of the issues you have with details. And it's, you know, I, I can't get in the weeds on the smaller items in the budget. There's no way. Jill probably can, the mayor probably cannot put you in the spot, Jill. But that's, that's her job, to be on the spot. But, you know, you, you can't get in the weeds on every little thing, but, but it will become more and more transparent as it works through. And I look at a budget, you know, in, in general business, well, a lot of times, we call it a business plan. It makes it feel a little more gentle, and it makes it feel a little more useful. And, and, and really what it is, is a tool. And so to, I know the mayor went through, "Oh, we cut this, we cut this, we cut this." And then what's going to happen during the year is that there'll be demands for other city services that are probably not even in the budget. I was telling her the other day, I, I live part-time now in New Orleans, and every now and then, part of the street falls out. And I realize that don't happen here, but I don't know how the heck they budget for that. Maybe they do there because it happens on a regular basis, but being below sea level does that. But there, there are things that are going to change along, along the way. In, in a larger sense, I mean, this is a, in my opinion, again, I get paid, but this is a very, very comprehensive and well-developed budget. And, and again, I, I look at it as a process that began back last November, in trying to develop a budget for last year after the fact. You know, you're off in the horse race, the horse is out of the gate, right? And trying to develop this, and also trying to get a handle, again, on what, on what the general fund issues are and are not. And there were other issues that came up with the component units and whatnot that I guess caused some concern along the way. But I think it's all, it's all addressed here very well. It, it's hard conceptually, and I heard the treasurer talk about restricted funds and all this kind of stuff, and where this money comes from. It's a very, very difficult concept, and if I tried to explain it today without more study, I couldn't. I thought you did a great job, you know, just basically talking about it. But, but it's something that will be developed over time, and that, that should be part of, you know, the financials are part of every meeting that you have. And, and that's every, every finance, every time you have a meeting, you have a chance to, to re, to reexamine the budget. And I think that's the way you have to go about it. And if, if you did that, then by the end of this year, everybody will have either amended or bought in to the budget you have, and it'll make it a heck of a lot easier next year. And that's, that's quite frankly where you need to be, because that's, that's what the utility is. Now, the, the, again, comparing to 17 is difficult, because we're not looking at, the sheet I have is, is the, is the general fund departments, and I think that's what, you know, Councilman Brown, that's what you were referring to. Is the, you know, kind of a overall summary. And what the mayor said is, is, "Well, if you really want to know, you got to get into the weeds." And, you know, the, the rest of the budget tabs are, you know, about, not that thick, but they go on. And it's actually, as y'all know, it's very difficult to print this, but anyway, because of the way it spreads out on the Excel spreadsheet. But, but of the items that are not, you know, that are not, that, that caused the deficit you were talking about, the transfer to the debt service fund and the capital project funds, which the mayor already addressed, some of the other issues are, there are some capital acquisitions, I think, that are already embedded in the operating accounts, just the normal capital acquisitions. So that, these all enhance the deficit. If you were running your own business and you decided you needed to buy a truck, you know, you may go finance it. So it's not coming out of current cash flow, but some of that is embedded in the current cash flow in the operating accounts that are in the budget already. So consequently, you have two areas of capital improvements. One is those that are coming out of previously reserved funds. So in effect, if you were appropriating it as you went, it might have been in the prior year budget. It's coming out of those reserve funds. So does it really in, in, increase the deficit? When you add it all up and subtract it all out, it might look like that, but actually, it is not. The debt service, the mayor mentioned, there was a, a, and I, and I'm, I'm assuming that the reason there was a 25% reduction of debt put into the sales tax thing, and I've seen this kind of stuff happen for 40-something years in municipalities, is if you're trying to sell a sales tax to people, you want it to have more of a purpose, just then we're going to put a sales tax, we need more revenue. So consequently, you say, "We're going to reduce the debt," and you pass that ordinance. And, and then after a while, it becomes old. You don't know, you no longer need it, because the debt is, is, is decreasing at an accelerating rate. Looking at the deficit, if you wanted to, and the mayor said debt's not bad, it is the way we all capitalize our businesses, right, Jimmy? Make people come in and buy our money. You know, you got, you, you, you have debt. When, when you go to, to buy something or to increase your infrastructure or increase your business, which I noticed the population numbers that the mayor put up, they're kind of stunning, that from 2010 to now, there's 19,721 people. I don't know when that happened. I see it. I don't know when it happened. But, but with that increase in the population, I don't know how city services don't decr- I don't know how y'all even talk about decreasing services or decreasing expenses, quite frankly. I mean, I see it, but I don't know how you do that. The, the, the last piece about the utilities, and I've been wanting to say this for years, and I know some of the people in my office would probably disagree, but I, and I realize the electric utility is contained, but you have a continuous, when, in the water and the gas, you have a continuously expanding system. And on the, on the electric side, you have a, even though it's contained, you have an aging system. And at times, obviously, we have unscheduled needs in the system because of storms and whatnot. But the, to just strip the utilities to continuously fund the city and not make provisions for capital improvements, what ends up happening then is that the debt load actually ends up being more pronounced ultimately in, in the utility side. So if you had a, if you had to replace the, a major components of the 50-year-old substation, you would have a major expenditure. And if you shifted all the operating money over to the city through the years to subsidize it, then you have a problem there. So I think the, even though they're all mutually, Jimmy, you were relating the overall, and I think that's the way the city has looked at it for years. It's just like it's, you said, husband and wife, but I think it's right pocket, left pocket, and if we need some money, we pull it over, we appropriate it. But at the same time, as the custodians of all of it, you guys and ladies, you know, you have to look to the future expansion or, or replacement of the system. And some of that has to be done. It can't all be done with debt. Some of it has to be done with money. So the, the process that's caused the confusion, I believe, from last year to this year, you know, is one, to be able to identify and, and to be able to support the enterprise funds, the utility funds, and make sure that they sustain themselves so that they can continue to subsidize the city, which I would suggest to you will always happen, you know, in the future. But, but I think, I think the picture is, is pretty clear. And, and if it matters, I think this is a pretty good budget.
Well, Ex, I, I got a comment or two. And I, first of all, I agree with the general direction we're going with, the organization and the structure of the budget, Mayor. And Ex, I, I think, and Jill, everyone who's worked on this, I think that it's going to get easier every year to go through this process. I, I think we have a lot of good detail in there. I think the, again, stepping back to the big picture, because it's hard to compare to last year, because we've made some changes in the way we're doing it, and completely different than the way it was done in 16. For me, that's why I think in the, the big picture scheme of things, you take a step back, you look at the combined city expenses and utility expenses and say, "Okay, as a council, how much do we want to grow expenses for the year?" Because that should all wash out. And maybe the way to do it is to get expenses growth to a level that we're comfortable with, pass a budget, and then consider items above and beyond that as they come forward, as needed, as exception. And I also agree that, long-term, the way we want to do utilities is the utilities should be having that cash reserve to fund the improvements to infrastructure that are needed. And that, and that's where I think we're, we're going with this. And we certainly have some projects that we know we need to take a look at in the next year or two.
Yeah, I agree with everything you said. I'll go.
Like I said, the, you know, some of these, and that's why you literally can go line item by line item. If you cut these, you're not going to be saving money. I mean, I can give you an example of why we need these things. Now, some of the vehicles, you know, if we don't want to purchase them, that's, that's fine, but you have to look at the mechanical- but you have to look at the mechanical department as a whole. It costs the city a million dollars a year. Well, we're going to really decrease that when we get sound vehicles for everybody because mechanical is very expensive. Now, look at that amount of money that we're spending on items that are depreciating. They're not like we're investing in something and tomorrow is, you know, increased in value. And the fact that we have nothing in place right now, zero department for our assets that appreciate, like building and things like that. So when I say this is a strategic budget, you can't cut these line items without truly understanding that it is an investment in something that is appreciating. A lot of times, it's, we're paying for it anyway, but we're bringing it in-house and it's going to be more affordable. I mean, we can go through every single item to say, when this budget is very good, and yes, we're increasing expenses, but we're doing, we're not increasing expenses because we're taking over a lot that we should have always paid for. I'm just talking about the city right now. And we're still doing it without having to borrow money. We're not taking any money, I mean, impact fees, we're going to use them. These cash reserves need to be renamed, these reserves, the pool, for capital purchases and improvements. We already have funds for capital projects. Those are the funds we use for these items that we need. And I've taken the bigger equipment and leased it for three years so we're no longer spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on mechanical for these big equipment. You know, a truck, a garbage truck will be out for however long it takes to get fixed. Well, nobody can work, and when it's finally fixed, they put in all this overtime. I mean, it's this type of inefficiency that we, it's an investment in our future. And it can't be done, well, you've cut it an additional this amount, we want to cut it even more. The reality is, two and a half million minimum is in there as an addition because we're taking care of our own operating expenses.
All right, we're going to get there, Mayor. Xavier, another issue I have with trying to get through this process is, in our budget book, we had a sheet that said it was 2.23 million dollars in increased personnel. I said, wow. A few weeks later, we get a sheet that says the net increase is 540,000. And now we're being told total reduction in new positions of the city is 450. So trying to figure out where these people went to, where the money is in the budget is another issue that I have trying to get through this process.
Right. And I think, you know, of course, a counting process of ones of pluses and minuses that end up at zero, and I think that's what you're referring to. The mayor had some, I guess, some slides and used some paperwork that showed the changes in the payroll. I think that's something, though, that probably can be reconciled.
Well, it's.
I disagree that can be reconciled. I know those positions, some of them were already in the budget and they should have already been in the utility departments and the other departments that those positions haven't been hired. But when it's presented initially with a 2.23 million dollar increase in personnel and then the number keeps changing.
And I want to address that. In that budget where that total was, again, we're trying to give you a lot of detail, that's not adding to the budget. A lot of that were vacancies. They've been in the budget. That's why I stood, and I spent hours on this report too, and I sent it to you, an Excel spreadsheet that showed you the net increase. Because it took things like, and I made a note on every single line item and categorized them, and I did it again just with full-time employees.
Right.
I mean, you're not adding all of these employees, and it's not like we haven't ever had them before. That's why I said today, let's just look at new positions, brand-new positions that we are actually adding to the city and to the, for the 2018 budget. And I wanted to break it out. You have within that, it's this sheet right here. All of these reports are right. They have different numbers because I'm giving you different information and looking at it from different perspectives. My hope is to make you understand it better, but it's not like we're coming back and saying, oh, let's take all of this out and make it a different number. All of this is in the original budget. But these are the cuts, additional cuts that I've made on this sheet, Robert, if you have it. These are the full-time positions that are new. They're not vacancies, they're not, you know, we're filling in, you know, something or it's, you know. I took those things out because honestly, like I said, they were in 2017 budget, some of them, and they've been hired since we beefed up our HR department. So I'm trying to show you 2018 snapshot of the things that we need. Some of these are promotions, some of them are part-time. One is a brand-new department, which is our Fairhope docks. And then, of course, you have also in here judicial for magistrate. And I think Jennifer is going to find out if that can be paid out of their funds. So this is not changing anything that I've given you before, but this breaks it down into a way that I think is a better way of presenting it because this is the new. What you said before, we're adding $2 million, that's just not the case.
I think if I could jump in, I know when I looked at that and I had some questions about that, sat down with the mayor, there were a lot of positions that were, as she said, they were either holdovers from the prior budget, they were promotions, they were replacements. I think what Robert is saying is that somewhere, that, sorry, 2.2, obviously, that was not reflective of what was really going to be the impact. The mayor indicated that was more of 500 to 540,000. And then the finance committee said it was going to be more like 1.4 to 1.5. And I think what Robert might be saying is, if the impact was only going to be 540 and we've cut 451 is now being proposed to cut, then how can we hire all these people for $90,000? Is that summarizing kind of where you were thinking is, if we're cutting 450 out of what was going to be 540,000?
But I guess the 540 was part-time and full-time. Is that correct, Mayor?
I mean, this is.
That was every single thing that was on the, in the budget book.
Just, I pulled the police tab in the more detailed budget, and the budgeted salaries last year were 3 million 233,000, the actual with 3 million 21. But I remember during the year distinctly that because there wasn't a budget, there was a backlog of unhired employees. So the actual ended up being a good bit less than the budgeted, well, 200,000, 12,000 less than the budgeted. And the budgeted this year is 3 million 339,000. So based on what was budgeted last year, the actual increase in police is about 100,000. And of course, it's graphic in the police department because the largest part of the budget, operating budget, is going to be personnel-driven. I think that the answer, if you want, you know, to get a better feel for that, would be to probably visit with Jill. And they have all the, I mean, they can show you where the, you know, what makes up that number. But we're getting lost in semantics, I think, between, you know, what we're saving by not doing this. And then we're looking back at last year's actual, when I think for part of the year we were, the city was unemployed because there was a backlog, you know, set up. I forget how many, at one point you said 35 or whatever employees need to be hired.
Just in the police department, based on the statistics, you have to have 2.2 sworn officers per thousand in population. And based on that, we need to hire 33.
Yeah, I'm talking about last year, Mayor. You know, because I remember last year you had a, even had a bunch of position to be filled and it couldn't fill it because of the.
And a lot of those were in here before I took office.
Right.
And so that's why I said, put aside what's already been approved. Because it might not be reflected in 2017, but it was approved, that process is done. Why do we have to relook at that again, not to mention that a lot of these people are hired? So that's why I said in the presentation, I took out open vacancies because those are and have been in the budget. We're actually going to hire people less than what these people left at because if they've been with the city a period of time, we hire people usually at a lower range when they start. So I left those out, and this is really the big picture of what our needs are for 2018.
And I think the variance is that, I think there's an assumption that there's going to be a substantial reduction of almost half a million dollars of overtime.
Well.
And that's where you're getting the million to the 500,000.
Overtime is going to be broken out. And right now, just know, I mean, fiscal year ended September, it takes a lot of time to hire people. So we're going to have that overtime until these people come. The more we delay this budget, that's an example of things that will just end up costing us more. And you have to understand that when you cut something from here, I promise you, you're going to pay for it another way. Otherwise, I wouldn't have put it in the budget. I'm a very frugal person. I mean, I own a bookstore with a less than 1% profit. I am about counting the nickels, okay? But I'm also looking at things that I know this investment will either make us money, make us a lot more efficient, which would save us money, or we're bringing something in-house that we should always have. And we've already looked at, like municipalities, that are not only doing it, but doing it with more people.
I'm going to jump in. Mr. Hartman, I appreciate you standing up, but I want to, I know there's been, there's several other citizens here, some of them I think have left. But if they're outside, if there's anybody else here that wanted to speak or say something regarding the budget that came today, I want to give you that opportunity. No takers, okay? You know, I've been relatively quiet during this meeting, you know, just in, and I'm no expert on budgets, but just, you know, the responsibility of putting in place the city budget is pretty significant, pretty substantial, in my opinion. It's the guideline and the framework from which the city operates for the entire fiscal year. And just looking at numbers, and I understand from the mayor that, you know, there is, this is considered a strategic budget, meaning that even though expenses are increased, they are designed to reduce costs in other places. But that does require a leap of faith to approve that expense with the hope that that savings will come. And just from a simplistic review of the numbers, going from seventeen to eighteen for just the city's finances, the city expected revenue is going down by almost $200,000, but our city expected expense is increasing almost $4 million. And that is a hard pill to swallow for me, just looking at these numbers. And again, I understand that there are expected savings that will, that will come. You spend money to make money, I guess, is the simple way to say that. But again, when you're looking at revenue going down and expenses going up by that amount, that is a concern, or at least it is for me.
I mentioned just one thing on revenue. You know, revenue in there is, I wanted to make it very conservative, and I think you can see in 2017, we exceeded revenue projections and we came under budget for expenses. And I'd like to always do that, and if it's not, then we need to study and see how we did this. So the revenue is very conservative. And one of the revenue pieces in there was also the garbage that hadn't been, you know, increased in forever. We're talking about a $3 item that's in your utilities. And I think citizens are well aware that our garbage pickup is less than anybody in the region, and $3 on your utility bill is inconsequential. But yet, y'all decided to do it a dollar a year. Well, that's income now that you can just reduce for this budget. Y'all are going to have to be the ones that approve the things we need for this city so we can budget. And we need to get these things done at the beginning of the year so we can achieve these goals. And what we're putting in as suggestions are things that we're still going to be the most reasonable city around. Many of these things have never been looked at in ten-plus years, but the city has to budget, you know?
And Mayor, I don't, I think you and I actually agree more than we disagree on some of this. I do agree that there are some things that the city has needed to reexamine for some time. And, you know, I'm on the garbage and recycling committee, and that was one of the things we talked about early on. I absolutely agree that that rate needs to increase.
Did y'all approve it for a dollar per year for three years?
I don't think we voted on it yet. But I think that is the way it was presented. But that's just a small example of some things that we might need to reexamine.
Right. That's $360,000. It does add up.
There are things, there are areas in the city that need more personnel and new equipment. And I think we addressed that in the last budget. I think we bought at least one garbage truck, maybe a recycling truck, and there's more proposed this year that I would expect us to approve because, again, you know, I know firsthand from talking to those guys is that that is, you know, we have four trucks and four men that drive those trucks, and when one truck's down, that shuts down a leg of our operation, which that's a concern. And some of this is efficiency and the need to have enough people to function and operate the city on a day-to-day basis. And I'm not disputing any of that. You know, I think my worry or what my focus has been on is deciding, not whether some of this is a good idea or a bad idea, some of these capital expenditures, it's just whether or not they're necessary for this year versus something that maybe can be addressed in another year. You know, priority versus want, I think, is kind of the way I'm viewing some of these things. And again, I'm one person looking at it, but that's just the way I've taken to look at it.
I think you're kind of saying what I'm thinking, that maybe, I don't know, all these are maybe a good idea, some of them certainly are good ideas, but maybe we need a more gradual implementation so that doesn't hit the expense column so much in one year. And I do appreciate the conservative estimate on the revenue, basically holding steady with last year, because revenue jumped $5 million from 15 to 17, and that's a huge jump. I mean, Fairhope's growing, people still want to move here, people still want to visit Fairhope, but you could have some outlying incidents, you know, if there were a bad storm or two, you would potentially have a decrease in sales tax if people weren't in town. I think it's good to keep that number conservative, and I think maybe we look at, try to come up with a budget that we can get behind as a council, keep the mayor informed so that we're not, you know, last year, I think we made some cuts without communicating effectively. We can do a better job of that. And then we can consider items as they come forward. I mean, and maybe it's just a personal preference, but I also would prefer to have the budget passed more timely. And I think we're definitely going to be way ahead of last year, and then I think next year we'll be way ahead of this year. So I think we're moving in the right direction. There's a lot to learn. I'd rather pass a more conservative budget timely and then consider additional items as they come forward.
Yeah, I think, I agree with that 100%, Jimmy. You know, passing something more conservative, but then have the ability and the flexibility throughout the year to consider items that become more of a priority during that year. You know, and I know we've talked a lot about personnel, and I know the mayor, when Robert and I met with you the first time, that's mostly what we talked about. You know, and my reason for wanting to make that a priority is because the salaries are permanent. Capital improvements can be a one-time thing. You know, capital improvements are, can be a one-time thing, but salaries are a, a consistent expense, day in, day out. And so when you start adding up the employees, that's, that's a permanent, that's a permanent fixture in your expense. And so that needs to be, in my opinion, scrutinized a little more heavily for what's needed versus what's wanted. But, but I do, I do agree with Jimmy that, and maybe, maybe not from a personnel standpoint, but from a capital purchase standpoint, that if there are, you know, maybe there are some things, even if they're not included in this original budget that is passed, that as the year progresses, if they become something that is an immediate need, that we could address that at that point and still have the flexibility to do that.
I do want to mention that, you know, y'all, y'all appointed a finance advisory committee, and I've gone to every three, three of the meetings that they've had so far. I think, Robert, you went to one, but-
I've watched them.
Y'all, y'all-
I couldn't meet, but I watched them.
I'm appointing them for an advisory, and I have been in communication with Chuck. We've met multiple times over and above these meetings. And when I go to these meetings, I take an active role in presenting. So I am spending more of my time now because, you know, y'all, y'all put this in place because you want their advice or, you know. And I think it's, you said you want to pass the budget more efficiently. We're in three months. This meeting that we're having, we're having because I called it. Where is that sense of urgency?
I'm just one person on the, I'm one person.
But I'm just saying, the sense of urgency to take care of this budget, which again, you said this, Jay, this is probably one of the most important part of your job. You can't sit on your hands, and you can't say, we'll do it next year. We're the last municipality in the county to pass a budget. And I'm pretty sure we're the last in Mobile County too, but two of the municipalities didn't call us back. I mean, just think about that. This is a council job. And 90 days when we haven't really met and we haven't been having these meetings, it's not fair to the city employees. And the people who lose are the citizens. They're the taxpayers. They're the ones that are paying for these inefficiencies.
I don't, I don't think the citizens are losing. And the financial advisory committee was initiated to help with the long-range planning because of the infrastructure needs. It had nothing to do with the, the annual budget, you know, although you did cover some of the infrastructure needs in this budget. I think the financial advisory committee even recommended removing that from the annual budget because that needs to be looked at individually. So that was-
Well, the inefficiency that I'm talking about is that if you don't approve it in this budget, then I am now, because of this resolution, anytime I want to spend over $2,500. It used to be $15,000 for many, many, many years, but they lowered it for me. And it really, it isn't for me, it's for the department heads. So they've lowered our spending to $2,500 for a city with over a $60 million budget. So that means now, for a finance committee that meets once a month, we have to go to them if it's not on the budget. And they're saying, we want a conservative budget, and we'll put other things in there. But we have to go to that, this committee, get their blessing before we can even put it on the council agenda. This is what I'm talking about in inefficiencies. This is wrong, and it has to be fixed.
Mayor, I respectfully disagree with you call inefficiency. I call appropriate checks and balances. I think that's the way the city, in any, in any government really, is supposed to work. There, everyone has a function and a role, and, and it's not fast, but it's designed to be correct. And, and that's the way I see it.
I totally understand that $2,500 limit for things that are not in a budget, that now y'all are saying, you're going to cut more, and then you want to hear the individual needs over a period of time. When a committee meets once a month, and that we have to spend our time going to this meeting to sell them on what we need for the city, and then put it on the council agenda, I mean, what part of that is not inefficient? I mean, this is, it's, it's really, really bad. And this is something that the council recently put into action. For someone who has transformed the budget in a very positive way, I have been extremely fiscal responsible with the budget. And for that, and it's not about me, you're limiting these department heads so they can't do, it could take six weeks to get a $2,500 item approved. That's not checks and balances. That is obstruction.
Council, any more comments?
I think, I appreciate the mayor's effort in the 1.3 or 4 million dollar cut that she just presented. Personally, I think we're probably still close to a million away from something that would approve.
Can I make one comment?
Please.
Just, I guess for, for the council's perspective, when y'all go back and look at this, there is a column that was created, and I know prior year's budgets probably don't mean a whole lot. But keep in mind that the actual 2017 column, that wasn't a full year. We started spending whenever that budget was approved in April. So it's not taken into account, you know, October through March. So just keep that in mind.
What, what spending wasn't accounted for?
In this actual 2017 numbers?
Right.
It was a short year because the budget wasn't approved until April.
But the council approved spending and covering city finances except for capital purchases, correct?
I know, but it's not reflected in this actual column. But my point is, Robert, I'm just trying to give y'all a little perspective. This budget 2010, 2017 reclassified utility and departmentalized expenses, you know, the time was taken to redo the entire 2017 budget. So we, so y'all approved a 2017 budget, just like it had been reported years and years and years and years. I took that budget and I reworked it. I reworked it totally to, to separate city expenses from the utility expenses. And that is what that column is. So ideally, if you look at that budget column, that 25.5 number is, is more of an accurate number that we should have spent in 2017. So if you take the 25.5, and you take the difference of the mayor's budget of 18, of 27.3, that's $1.8 million increase, as opposed to the 3.6 from 2017 actual to 2018. I, I want y'all to zone in also on the, the rewritten budget column. It took, it took a, a good bit of time to do that, and I totally reworked the 17 budget just to show y'all how it would have looked had it been approved the way we're trying to do it now. And that, and that's, that's all I wanted to say about that. I mean, it's just a different perspective. I do want y'all to look at each and every one of those columns because they're, they mean something. And I, I'm not-
I want to just say something else to what you just said, and I appreciate you pointing out that what you're seeing as far as a jump and increase in expenses, you're right. It's not a full year, and we have things carried over for the next year. But, and I was just fixing to say something really, really important, Jill. And I lost what I was trying to say. But it was about what you just said about the difference between those expenses. Oh, so you have that difference, so it's 1 point, what again?
1.8.
1.8 is what we should have had in 2017.
So it would have been a more realistic figure.
Right. So if you have that, kind of keep that mentally, and then look at what we have for 2018, and then add these cuts. I, I think that's important because you are trying to cut it to a certain amount based on where we ended up in 2017, when it wasn't a full year. And we're taking over a lot more expenses for the city. And I do think that what I have presented and the cuts that, that I put in, I mean, I can appreciate always wanting to look at every item and how can we save more. But I spent all night last night, I didn't sleep, this, this whole presentation was put together last night, looking at every single item. And I know that these items are not things you cut and save money. There are, there might be a few vehicles, you know, but I didn't want to get into that because a lot of times right now, we've reduced vehicles, passenger vehicles in the city from 234 vehicles when I took office to 142. So I don't want to cut vehicles because a lot of times now, this vehicle is for this person, when we get this new vehicle, I mean, that also takes a lot of time and, and effort. So, you know, I think if y'all understood every little item that went into this to, oh, and the other thing that I, that I cut, that's, you know what, it's not even in here. I don't think.
Engineering department?
Well, we, we are going to look at, right now, when we buy a new vehicle for the police department, we're buying SUVs and we're adding all of the things that they need, equipment. And not only are these very expensive pieces of equipment, but the mileage, gas mileage is not that great.
You did put sedans in there.
Okay.
Shifted into sedans.
Right. Okay. So, you know, those are things that, when we get those in, that will also save in the gas expense for that department too. But anyway, I, every time we drill down, we can do better, but we can't sit on our hands and just say until it's perfect, we're not going to do anything. And I don't think saying, we're going to cut all of this out because you can come to me every other week and figure out what you want, is fair to me and the city employees.
And I guess I'm not suggesting that. I'm, I'm suggesting that we cut it to the point that we're comfortable with it and we pass it, and if there's something that absolutely has to be done that year and can't wait until the next budget cycle, then bring it to us. I'm not saying we're cutting it here and I want you to bring everything on this that got cut. Bring it to us. I, I don't want to see everything that gets cut. I want that to wait until the next budget cycle.
The email that you sent me, you said, I want to cut the budget by 2.5 million to 3 million.
Two and a half to three, yeah.
I've already cut it now.
1.2, correct.
Right. With what she just said about what 2017 should have been, we're there. Not to mention that we're becoming self-reliant. We're go, we're, we're making extreme progress in the city.
Mayor, in your positions that were cut, I don't see the engineering department in there, is that?
The only thing that I could, what, we called it an engineering department, but what's in there, and it's, it's in there, I, I took out the lead engineer.
Senior engineer.
Richard, he had a senior engineer, and Richard Peterson is going to shoot me. Because he can't do it all. We own all of our utilities, and I can promise you, you look at other utilities, they have a team of engineers. Right now, we have, and he's great, but we have someone who's not working as an engineer. He's working as an operation director. So what I have in here, of course, that's in the utility part.
Yeah, so I didn't see it on that next sheet.
Right. You know, what was under, these were not all engineers. You have, well, the utility engineer, the skated technician, the mapping technician. So it's not like, we, we said we had an engineering department, but that's because all of these people together are going to map out our utilities. I mean, they're not mapped. This has to happen. And if we get somebody else to do it and get a team and hire them, it's going to be more money. And it's not something we can put off. In fact, I have a restore act proposal for $10 million. It was approved for the first approval process. We will know very soon if we're going to get that. And that's going to be fantastic. I feel, not want to jinx it, but I feel very confident that we're going to get that. And we have to have this in-house. We're no longer going to get professionals' help, and they say, these are the things you have to take care of. Because that happened in 2012. Sewer study, these are the things you need to do, very similar to what we're doing. Nothing happened. We're going to do it. I mean, if, if y'all don't want to approve it, we're going to use the restore act funds. But I mean, regardless, that'll be a gift to our community and take care of a lot. But these people in our utilities are going to identify things in order of a priority, fix them quickly and inexpensively because you have cameras, the smoke testing, and all of these things that this encompasses. I mean, Richard Peterson is the expert. He's been talking about this since March. Why go through all of this and just say, yeah, we don't need it? Because we do need it, and if we don't hire it in-house, it will be cheaper in-house. Because these are things, they can do a lot more stuff that we need besides sewer spills and things like that. It's going to take, it's going to give a lot of help to both Richard Peterson and Richard Johnson. They are civil engineers, but they're not the engineers that are going to be putting things together. You know, they're giving their stamp of approval. And a city with an over $60 million budget, you know, before I took office, zero engineer. We spent, I don't know, six, over $600,000 in civil engineering contract. And I showed y'all how much we saved last year, it was over 300,000. So you're going to pay for it whether or not you approve it in here or not. But I think if you do it and it's in-house, we're going to come, we're going to save a lot of money. And that goes for the in-house full-time attorney as well.
Well, I want to thank everybody for coming out. Jill, Mayor, thank y'all so much for taking the time to put all this together for us and getting us to where we are now. But if there is nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Salute.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is adjourned.